I'd like to call the order, this meeting of the PBD City Council, please join me in a moment of silent prayer.
Counselors, you heard the motion from Councilor Gould, and that motion is for both the record for the meeting of September 15th, 2016, and the meeting of September 29th, 2016. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. This meeting is being televised live on Cable Channel 9, and is being taped by PBD Access TV, and is also being recorded by our City Council stenographer. We're going to take a couple of issues out of order this evening. Going to jump down to Item 7D, and we're going to ask His Honor, the Mayor, to address the council.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, councilors. We're very fortunate, we have some outstanding people that are willing to volunteer on a couple of boards. You have some appointments in front of you. We do have a couple of the city residents here today that I did want to introduce, that are volunteering their time and talents to assist us on some important work. First is the Council on Aging. I did go to the Council on Aging Board and request permission from the council to add two additional members to the Council on Aging Board. Currently, they had nine. I asked for approval to add two more, for a total of 11. The significant increase in senior citizens in our city, and the important work that takes place at our senior center and across the city, I felt warranted a couple of additional members. That was unanimously approved by the board, and I'm here today to put forth two names for approval to serve on the Council on Aging Board. First is Loretta Tenalia, who is here today. I think many of you know Loretta. She's been involved in a number of organizations, assisting the City of PBD now for a number of years. She has been involved with the PBD Housing Authority, North Shore Elder Services, and has been involved in the PBD Senior Center now for a number of years. And she is an original member, original resident of Brooksbury Village, and I'm thrilled that she's willing to help out. She's here today, and I wanted to introduce and thank Loretta for volunteering. Loretta, thank you.
Loretta, would you like to address the council? Counselors, for clarification, this is Item 7E. I had said 7D, 7E.
I want to thank the mayor for his vote of confidence in my ability to be a member of the board. I think we have the best Council on Aging there is, and I am looking forward with enthusiasm to serving, and I am grateful to be here tonight, and ask for your approval.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Loretta, and I did want to mention Linda Mondonza. Many of you know Linda. She is another wonderful lady who's been involved in a number of city events and city organizations. She's a regular at the PBD Senior Center, helping out in a variety of ways, and I think she'll be an excellent member as well to the Council on Aging Board.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also on 7E, you have an appointee for the Community Preservation Committee.
Thank you. I also wanted to bring forth his name for approval for the Community Preservation Committee, the general public position as an alternate. All of you know the important work that takes place on that committee and the wonderful projects, projects we've been able to do as a city, protecting our city's history, protecting open space, doing recreational projects, and helping with affordable housing. And I'd like to put forth Jeff Schmays. I think all of you know Jeff. He's been involved, he and his family in the city now for a number of years, and I think he knows the city as well as anybody, and I think he'd be an excellent addition to the board. And Jeff is here today, and I appreciate him willing to help us out.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Schmays, would you like to address the council? Mr. Schmays has declined the offer to address the council. Council Walsh, can I have a motion under suspension of the rules to receive Item 7E?
So moved, Mr. President.
Counselors, here the motion, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Council Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move approval of Jeff Schmays to the Community Preservation Commission, Loretta Tenalia to the Council on Aging for one-year term, and Linda Mondonza to the Council on Aging for a two-year term. So moved, and all excellent appointments.
Counselor, would you be amenable to amending your motion to specify Mr. Schmays as the general public alternate? It wasn't listed, but that is an important.
I'd be happy to do that, Mr. President.
Counselors, you heard the motion from Councilor Walsh. Roll call.
Counselors Mitsoulis.
Yes.
Sinowitz.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Grevell.
Yes.
Garabedian.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Motion carries ten to nothing.
If I could, Mr. President.
Counselors, Item 7D.
Thank you. I do have some additional reappointments on 7D that I put forward. Again, wonderful people that have helped us out in a variety of ways. I did want to mention, and just take a moment, I had mentioned at the last council meeting, and a couple of you had called me with some recommendations, but if you do know anybody that is willing to serve specifically on the Cable Commission or on the Conservation Commission, if anybody's watching and they would like to be a part of city government and help on those two boards in particular, we are down a couple of members on each, and if any councilors have any recommendations, please let me know. It's important work for the city, and hopefully we can get some people in there to help us with these projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Saslaw, can I have a motion under suspension of the rules to receive Item 7D?
Yes, under suspension of rules, motion to receive Item 7D.
Counselors, here the motion, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Saslaw.
Motion to approve all appointments on Item 7D. Do you want me to read them individually?
If you could just clarify that Mr. Schultz, it's as written, but Mr. Schultz is a general public member, which is not listed here, of the Community Preservation Committee.
Motion to approve Item 7D, and clarify that. Under the appointments, Michael Schultz is a member of the Community Preservation Committee as a general member.
General public member. Counselors, you heard the motion by Counselor Saslaw. Roll call.
Counselors Mitsoulis.
Yes.
Sinowitz.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Grevell.
Yes.
Garabedian.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Motion carries ten to nothing.
Counselors, on your desk this evening, you should see a late communication from me, and this also deals with the Community Preservation Committee. Counselor Sinowitz, could I have a motion?
Motion to receive, under suspension of rules, motion received.
Thank you, Counselor Grevell, under suspension of the rules to receive the late communication. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselors, this is to address the city council's representation on the Community Preservation Committee, and we just, the mayor just appointed Mr. Schmays to the general public alternate position that had previously been filled by Councilor Turco. So what we're doing here in this action is moving Mr. Turco, Councilor Turco, to be a city council alternate member of the Community Preservation Committee. Could I have that motion? Counselors, you heard the motion from Councilor Walsh to approve the appointment of Councilor John G. Turco to the position of Community Preservation Committee City Council alternate with a term to expire 12/31/2017. Was it Barry? I saw the light. The motion from Counselor Sinowitz, thank you for the clarification. Roll call.
Counselors Mitsoulis.
Yes.
Sinowitz.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Grevell.
Yes.
Garabedian.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Motion carries ten to nothing.
Item 4A, would the clerk please read the notice of public hearing?
Notice is here by giving that the City Council of the City of PBD, acting as a special permitting authority, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, October 13th, 2016, at 7:30 PM in the Franco-Wiggin Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Low Street, PBD, Mass., on the application from Group One Automotive, Inc., 800 Gessner Road, Houston, Texas, for a special permit to allow for the storage of undamaged and operable vehicles at Zero Willowdale Street Rear and Zero Willowdale Ave. Assessors map 39, parcels 23 and 24, PBD, Mass., as filed in accordance with sections 4.2.5, 6.1, and 15.7 of the PBD zoning ordinance. PBD City Council Councilor Peter M. McGinn, City Council President.
Attorney Von Zalidis.
Excuse me, Mr. President.
Yes.
I would just like to recuse myself on this.
Thank you, Counselor Garabedian. I'm going to have to move this because I can't run the meeting from behind the billboard. Counselor Gould showing his background as an engineer. Attorney Von Zalidis.
For the record, my name is Ethan Von Zalidis. I'm an attorney practicing law at 246 Andover Street in PBD. I'm here on behalf of the petitioner with respect to this evening's application. As for the petitioner, Group One is a publicly owned or publicly traded company. They own over 143 car dealerships throughout the United States, and as you already know, Group One also owns the Audi dealership that's situated at 252 Andover Street. We're here this evening because basically Group One needs to expand its inventory of storage facilities in order to keep up with their increased demand in both new and used automobiles, and in an effort to do so, they have entered into a purchase and sales agreement with Mr. Spiero Demakis to purchase the property that's shown as Assessors Lot 24 on map 39. His property contains about 2.9 acres of undeveloped land, and Group One is also going to be entering into a purchase and sales agreement with the City of PBD to purchase their abutting parcel of property, which I believe is shown as Lot 23 on Assessors map 39, and that parcel of property consists of approximately 26,300 square feet of undeveloped land. If granted the special permit, Group One would combine these two properties into one parcel that would contain 3.5 acres of land, as it's shown on our submitted site plan, and they would use that property as a storage lot solely for the outdoor storage of automobiles in connection with their Audi dealership. As you can see from the plan, the only improvements that we need to make is basically paving a portion of Willowdale Lane and a driveway that leads up to the property, along with paving the storage lot and installing the associated utilities such as drainage, lighting, and landscaping. I think it is worth noting that the use of this property is an extremely very benign use. There is no day-to-day activities that occur here, as you would find if it was a retail use or office use or any form of residential development. In addition, there's no day-to-day increase in traffic to and from the property since the cars are stored on-site, brought there, and removed only when the inventory is needed. As I stated earlier, the proposed use is a benign use. We have been granted our order of conditions from the Conservation Commission to move forward with the project. We've received a favorable vote from the planning board with respect to our site plan review process, and if granted the special permit, Group One will move to a closing on both of the properties and move forward with the construction of the storage lot. I have Mr. Neil Sander with me here this evening. He's our site engineer, and together we'll try to answer any questions that either the council or the public may have. Thank you.
Is there anybody here this evening that would like to speak in support of this application? Anybody here that would like to speak in support? Is there anybody here that would like to speak in opposition to this application? Anybody that would like to speak in opposition to this application? Seeing none, Council Chair.
Thank you, Chairman. So it's been several months, and we've been working on this project with the applicant here and with the support and help of the mayor's office. To have one question, on the diagram here, you show that you have a paved road, then a gravel road to a paved. Is there a reason why that portion of gravel road is not going to be paved?
Not really, but you and I had discussed this, and if you want to make it a condition of the permit that that portion of the roadway be paved, so it's one contiguous roadway, that's fine with the petition.
I would like to make that part of the condition. I think it would be a better use, and aesthetically, it'd be more pleasing to.
And it'd function better.
Correct. I have no objections. I've known we've worked on this quite some time. All the issues been addressed. I know, again, as a ward counselor, speaking with the neighborhood residents, they approve of this project, they support this project because of the use of it and what the alternative would be. I know this is going to be a financial plus for the city, and I'm going to support this.
Thank you, Council Chair. Other councilors? Counselor Saslaw.
Just was curious, so how many cars will be?
That site plan is designed to store 333 cars.
And I see you have some, there are two areas that you have put aside for snow storage, is that correct? Just two areas?
Yes. With car dealerships, you don't really see much plowing. Those storage areas are for a small storm of one or two inches. If we have any significant snowfall, all the car dealerships do snow removal.
Thank you. No further questions? Thank you, Counselor Saslaw. Other councilors? Counselor Sinowitz.
Thank you, Mr. President. So just going through the application, is there something on here about taxes being owed?
I believe that the Demakis property has outstanding taxes that will be paid when we close.
How much, what is that amount?
I don't know. Look, the collected in state.
Yeah, that's what I didn't know. But it will be paid?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. I was just, I also had my question too on the snow storage, because when you look at this map, these numbers mean something. On page 2, 57, 65, 56, 55, 54, that's the elevation of the property, and it's flowing like this away. So in terms of snow, salt, sand, where is all that runoff going to that's not going into the wetlands?
Neil, you're up. That runoff there is, first of all, there's a board-on-board fence that surrounds the entire property.
Excuse me, could you please give your name and address for the record?
Sure. My name is Neil Sander. I'm the engineer of record for the property.
Thank you.
There's a board-on-board fence that surrounds the entire property, so the first snow is going to collect against that fence. Anything that gets beyond that is going to run across the road. If it gets past the stone wall, it'll go onto the existing dealership property, which does have water quality features as part of its design.
Which one is it? I'm sorry, I'm just trying, on this map, which one, where's the?
This would be the DXL Big Men Store.
Oh, okay.
That would be the self-storage facility. That's my office right there.
Okay. And was the dealership is right there?
The dealership is probably right about there.
Right there.
And just so you'll know, when you talk drainage, like I said earlier, this project was granted an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission. In order to get an order of conditions, you have to submit extensive drainage calculations and drainage plan, and that ultimately needs the approval of the Department of Public Services, and we did obtain that, which is how we were issued our order.
So if you get a foot of snow, that snow is going to be taken off-site?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Counselor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to commend Counselor Charis and the mayor's office for not giving up, for being diligent, and coming up with a great solution along with the development owners. But Counselor Charis, you did a great job staying right on top of it and working with the neighbors, and I want to commend you for that. And the mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gould. Other councilors? Counselor Turco.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Attorney Von Zalidis. In the past meeting, and it was a few months ago, we discussed that there was a park to separate the lot from the neighborhood. I just don't see it on the map. I kind of felt this might come up. I don't want the council to be confused between two different projects. What we're, the park that you're talking about is a future project that we'll be filing, and that concerns the DeCulless property, which is an eight-acre parcel on the other side of Willowdale Avenue that connects to Richardson Road and Mount Pleasant Drive. And you're correct. When we do submit that plan, there will be a small park area that we will convey to the city, and it will also prevent any access out onto Richardson Road, which was a major concern to the residents. Thank you very much.
Just one quick comment from me with respect to the question from Counselor Charis on the paving. Would that impact your order of conditions from the Conservation Commission?
No, that's far outside the buffer zone.
Thank you. Counselor Charis.
Thank you very much. I'd like to make it an order of condition of the.
Counselor Charis, we just need to close the hearing.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Counselors, you heard the motion to close the public hearing. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Charis.
Thank you very much. I would like, again, to move for approval on this with the condition of the road we spoke of, the gravel area in front of, I guess it would be similar to in front of your.
Where the pavement ends and the pavement's about to begin.
All pavements connected to be done at that time. So moved.
All papers?
With all papers of approval, in order.
I would say that the gravel area as shown on the site plan be paved, so it's to create one connecting paved roadway. How's that?
Could I read the motion? Just so we're clear on the full motion.
Yes. To move the grant of permit with those conditions.
Well, the motion is to approve the special permit with the condition that the gravel area.
That the gravel area as shown on the site plan be paved.
One continuous pavement.
So it's to create one contiguous paved roadway.
So moved.
Counselors, you heard the motion. Roll call.
Counselors Mitsoulis.
Yes.
Sinowitz.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Grevell.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to nothing.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Counselors, we're going to move to Item 7C. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President, counsel. Kind of a strange set of circumstances. I think many of you know the background story, but there was a decision rendered.
So moved to receive.
Oh.
Counselors, you heard the motion from Counselor Sinowitz, under suspension of the rules to receive Item 7C. All in favor? Any opposed? A vote. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, counselor. As I said, I think all of you know the circumstances, kind of a strange set of circumstances for me to be in. However, because of the decision that was rendered in the Perak versus Benton Court case regarding my father, I think it best to, because of the inherent conflict for myself and for City Hall employees, I wanted to request authorization to hire outside counsel to come in and take the case and move forward with it, and to remove myself because of the conflict. And I wanted to ask for a motion on that, please.
So moved, Mr. President.
Counselor Walsh.
Yeah, Mr. President, I would move approval of the request for outside counsel with the attorney being Nicholas Poser. So moved.
On the motion, Counselor Sinowitz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the mayor, is, this is pretty, I mean, how much money are we talking about? Is this a pretty simple thing to do? It doesn't sound like it to me, not knowing everything, but it seems like a pretty basic thing to do. It's not going to cost us $3.50 an hour. Is there an estimate of what?
I don't think so. I don't think it will be a large number. Right now, as you know, we have a certain amount, have a money in the line item to cover such things. If and when we needed to come back for additional money, which we may have to because of the two Washington Street matter, we would come forward and seek additional funds. I don't think that's going to be necessary for this case.
Okay. Thank you.
The motion on the floor. Roll call.
Yes.
Sinowitz.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Grevell.
Yes.
Garabedian.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Motion carries ten to nothing.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselors, we're going to take one more out of order here, moving to Item 8D. Counselor Saslaw, can I get a, under suspension of the rules, a motion to receive?
Under suspension of rules, motion to receive Item 8D. And approve all papers being in order.
Yeah, my understanding is there's some people here this evening from the applicant.
Sure.
I don't know, was it, was it, was there an expectation to speak this evening?
I had no idea that they were even here until you just.
Okay. So the motion, is there a motion to approve? Is it all papers being in order?
Motion to approve all papers in order, unless they'd like to address the council. That's up to them, if they'd like to.
You need to speak into the microphone.
If you could just state your name and address for the record, please. Good evening. My name is Joe Devlin. I'm an attorney from the Devlin Law Offices with offices in 50 Congress Street in Boston and also 1 Harris Street in Newburyport, represent Bertucci's Restaurant Corporation. They're looking to extend their television and radio entertainment permit for an hour until 12 o'clock. With me is Sean Gillis, who's the general manager there as well.
Thank you. Any questions, councilors? Counselors, you heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you very much.
Reports to committees. Counselor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. President. A lively discussion in regards to the mixed-use overlay. Like to make a motion to send the mixed-use overlay, as recommended, to the planning board with notation that there was a three-to-two vote in subcommittee to not approve it. So moved.
Counselors, you heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
No further discussions.
Thank you, Counselor Gould. Counselor Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Legal Affairs Committee met this evening prior to this meeting. Counselor Gould briefly sat in, then Counselor McGinn and Counselor Charis, and I do appreciate his help, sat in. Counselors McGinn and Charis participated, and there were a couple items before us. The first item was to execute a purchase and sale agreement on the remaining portion of city-owned land on map 39, parcel 23, Willowdale Avenue, and that was approved by the committee, and the sale price was $380,000. So moved.
Counselors, you heard the motion. Roll call.
Counselors Mitsoulis.
Yes.
Sinowitz.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Garabedian.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Motion carries ten to nothing.
Mr. President, the second item the committee discussed was the request from His Honor of the Mayor for an additional 20 all-alcoholic liquor licenses for the city of Peabody. After some discussion, it was approved by the committee with the request that the Mayor designate specific areas, designated areas for the licenses to be assigned to. He will forward that information to us, and we will make a final vote, which will then go to, as a whole rule petition, be submitted to the legislature, and we will file legislation for the additional licenses. So moved.
Counselor, are you going to address the change of address as a separate matter or?
No, I'm sorry, we did include that in the motion to change the address from 8688 Main Street to 2 Main Street, and that's included in the same legislation, we'll all be together, and that motion was by Counselor Gravel.
Counselor, you heard the motion, you heard the motion by Counselor Walsh, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. Counselor Walsh.
I'll sit, Mr. President, thank you.
Counselor Gravel.
Thank you, Counselor President, this evening, a meeting of the Finance Committee was held here at the Wigan Auditorium. Present for the committee were Councilors Gould, Counselor Saslaw, Counselor Walsh, and we asked Counselor Garabedian to sit in for Counselor Manning Martin, also all other councilors were here. First item on the agenda was a transfer of CPA Historical Preservation Funds in the amount of $12,000 to CPA Historical Preservation Fund in the amount of $12,000. That motion was approved unanimously, so moved.
Councilors, you heard the motion, roll call.
Councilors Mitsoulis, Sinowitz.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Garabedian.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Motion carries ten to nothing.
Counselor Gravel.
Thank you, Counselor President, second issue on the agenda this evening for the Finance Committee was a roof replacement for Peabody High School in the amount of $3,100,000. A bond order had been advertised, the bond is now ready for council adoption, that was approved unanimously, so the motion would be to approve the bond in the amount of $3,100,000 for the replacement of the Peabody High School roof as advertised.
Counselor Gravel, because of the sequence here, this is also item 10A on the agenda.
Move to receive item 10A on the suspension rules.
Councilors, you heard the motion from Counselor Gravel, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote, and so we are addressing essentially both at this point, correct, counsel? Councilors, you heard the motion from Counselor Gravel, roll call.
Councilors Mitsoulis.
Yes.
Sinowitz.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Garabedian.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Motion carries ten to nothing.
Counselor Gravel.
The next item on the agenda was a bond order requesting, that would be required for the dredging of Crystal Lake. The amount of the bond order was $2 million, it had been previously advertised as requested. It is now ready for council adoption, so the motion would be to issue the bond order in the amount of $2 million as advertised, so moved.
And same issue here, under suspension of the rules, this is item 10B.
It's 10B, correct?
Yep.
Under suspension of the rules, receive 10B.
Councilors, you heard the motion from Counselor Gravel to receive item 10B, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote, and on Counselor Gravel's motion, roll call.
Councilors Mitsoulis.
Yes.
Sinowitz.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Garabedian.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Motion carries ten to nothing.
Counselor Gravel.
And I only wanted to join Counselor Sinowitz in saying hallelujah after all these years on the council, we're going to dredge the lake, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gravel. Motions, orders, and resolutions, Counselor Mitsoulis.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go to item 8, under suspension of the rules, I'd like to go to item 8H, motion to receive and approve, it's a special permit transfer.
Councilors, you heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. Counselor Mitsoulis. Thank you, Counselor, Counselor Sinowitz.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion for the Department of Public Works to repair some potholes at 43 Harrison Ave, so moved.
You heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote, Counselor Sinowitz.
Under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 8B, and move approval, all papers being in order, so moved.
Councilors, you heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote, Counselor Sinowitz.
Yeah, so just looking at this, we were at $3.5 million for the vocational school last year. If my recollection is correct, we were somewhere in the neighborhood of 220, 225 students last year? Oh, okay, but, so if my figures are right, the number has gone to 269 students. So if we kind of divide this by that, we're over 4 million for our 2018 assessment, and then I get the pleasure of reading in the paper how the no-bid deal on the sports facility for the ice time, how, I give the guy credit, he's got, he's got stones, he subleases out three businesses, taking the concessions and revenue while we get nothing out of the deal. It's just unbelievable. Then, the sport gives the hockey team 40 hours of ice time for free, after that, it's per diem, per hour. Now, a hockey team might practice 20 hours a week. So I am just shocked, and I got to tell you, there's going to be some hard decisions down the road if this keeps going up and up and up, and I'm just disgusted, and I guess I'd like to make a motion to our school committee to forward to the vocational school, is what have they done to try to reduce costs at the vocational school? We talked about a lot of things when Mr. Lapini, Superintendent Lapini was here, and he didn't even show up, he didn't do anything for the new budget, and I got a piece of paper like this saying, here you go, for $3.5 million, so we're back to the same chazarei, excuse the language, but I don't know what to say, but this is going to really impact our community, it's really going to impact it, and the school committee's coming back, I hear, for more money, and so, I'm just about done on this topic, but we're going to have to do something in the future. And that's it, have a great night.
Counselor, I think there was a motion in there, which, there was --
So moved.
So I think the motion was, the clerk recorded.
Is the motion for the school committee to forward to the vocational, what they've done to reduce costs?
That's correct.
Councilors, you heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote, Counselor Sinowitz. Counselor Sinowitz. Thank you, Counselor Sinowitz, Counselor Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President, under suspension of the rules, Mr. President, I have a communication on my desk from Camille Batlett from Peabody Access Telecommunications, in which she states that the next Thursday, October 20th, 2016, is going to be Community Media Day, so under suspension of the rules, if there's no objection, I'd like to receive this communication, and there is a resolution here, if there's no objection, if the council is willing to support this, that we would be in support of the Community Media Day, which appropriately falls in the middle of Free Speech Week 2016. I can read this if you'd like, but it's basically supporting the efforts at Peabody Access Television and all those who are in support of free speech, so moved.
Councilors, you heard the motion from Counselor Walsh, first, to, for the late receipt under suspension of the rules, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote, and second motion was to support the resolution as written in the late communication. All in favor, any opposed, it's a vote, Counselor Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have a second motion, this is a co-motion with Counselor Charis, and this motion would request the Massachusetts Department of Transportation to investigate the yield signs at Centennial Drive on the Route 128 Bridge. That's the motion, so moved, and the reason I think it's important for this council to be on record is I have talked, communicated with the Department of Transportation about these yield signs, if you ever go over, they're opposite to how we learn how to drive, and the yield sign is not on the ramp coming off Route 128, the yield sign is for those who are coming over on the main road of the bridge, and more often than not, there are accidents there and people are racing each other, because the people who have the yield signs don't realize they do, and the cars coming off 128 don't stop, and I've talked to a couple police officers who have been there investigating accidents, it is an issue, and I just think that this body should be on record requesting that the Department of Transportation address this issue, and honestly, the resolution, I think, is reversing the yield sign so that you're yielding as you come off 128 and that main traffic would be the through traffic, so moved.
Counselor, you heard the motion from Counselor Walsh, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote, Counselor Walsh.
I'll sit, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh, Counselor Charis.
Thank you. Under suspension of the rules, I'd like to move to accept item 8J, and move to support resolution opposing the lifting of the cap of the charter schools and supporting of our school committee's decision also.
Councilors, you heard the motion from Counselor Charis, all in favor?
We roll call?
Roll call.
So with the show support?
Roll call.
Councilors Mitsoulis, Sinowitz, Walsh.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Garabedian.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Motion carries ten to nothing, one absent.
Counselor Charis.
Thank you very much, I'd like also to, under suspension of the rules, accept Communication 8I, and on the move to approve the site plan and move to --
It's just a receive, counsel.
Receive, not to, for a hearing.
No hearing.
Thank you.
You heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote, Counselor Charis.
Thank you. I'd like to ask the Public Works Department to fill in a pothole at Kendall and Ellsworth Road, so moved.
You heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote, Counselor Charis.
I would also like to have the Public Works fill in a pothole at 14 Ellsworth Road.
You heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote, Counselor Charis.
I would like to ask the Public Works to look into placing a sign of children on Felton going east to west on top of the hill and at their discretion where the best place would be, so moved.
Councilors, you heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote, Counselor Charis.
I would also like to ask the, I believe it would be the Municipal Safety Committee in looking into the new bill that was passed, Bill H. Dot 4565, signed by the governor, I believe, in July 31st, and that is allowing cities and towns to set their speed limits 20 to 25 miles an hour on their particular roads. That gives us more control over what the speed limit is going through residential streets. I would certainly love to be able to have that, you know, at their discretion in our hands and on safety on our roads, so I would like to move that into the committee for their expertise in going forward and changing those signs where maybe prohibited, um, permitted, so moved.
Just for clarification, you're asking to move this to committee? This legislation's pending, right?
Yeah, it is, I just wanted to make sure we do in the proper fashion.
I'm sorry, I stand corrected, Counselor Walsh tells me it's been adopted, so your initial course of action is, would be prudent. So you heard the motion from Counselor Charis, all in favor, any opposed, on the motion, Counselor Sinowitz.
Through you to Counselor Turco, what's the speed limit on Bartholomew Street?
Counselor Sinowitz, as you may, as you may or may not know, there are several speed limits on Bartholomew Street, at the beginning of Bartholomew Street, it's listed as 20, changes to 30, further down by the pond, it goes back to 20, and then closer to the Lynn Street end, it goes back up to 30. This is an issue that --
I just thought that that might be pertinent, but, you know, so, thank you.
So we have Counselor Charis's motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote, Counselor Charis.
Yes, and just according to order, I thought Counselor Turco would find this interesting in, in being part of the Safety Committee, uh, Safety, Municipal Safety Committee, you would appreciate that conversation, just waking you up, that's all, just trying to get you engaged here. And I just would like to make note that some, several months ago, I brought to your attention and asked for the approval of the committee, you voted in favor, was to ask the MBTA to, as that show says, move that bus. They, we had a meeting with the representative of the MBTA, with Chris Ryder, and with the conversation, they agreed that it's not the best location for the bus to go down, and they are going to move that bus to a different route that would not be, it's less than a 10% chance, 10% change in that route, so it doesn't require a full committee, that would have taken months upon months. So that has been stated to be stopped on that route December, at the end of December, and I just want to thank our rep, Tom Walsh, for all his support on that also, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Charis, Counselor Saslaw.
Thank you, under suspension of the rules, motion to receive item 8E, which I believe was a duplicate from the last meeting, and referred to Municipal Safety Committee, but just for housekeeping purposes, we'll receive it again.
You heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote, Counselor Saslaw.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for DPS to fill potholes at 5, in front of 5 Benevento Circle, that would be before and after the major patch they did last year, that'd be potholes at 5 Benevento Circle.
You heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote, Counselor Saslaw.
I'd like to make a motion to request a meeting of the Ad-Hoc Committee on Drug Education Awareness at our next council meeting to briefly discuss the third annual Colton Buckley 5K Road Race, so moved.
You heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote, Counselor Saslaw.
No further motions.
Thank you, Counselor Saslaw, Counselor Turco.
Thank you, Mr. President, under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 8A.
You heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote, Counselor Turco.
Mr. President, under suspension of the rules, move to receive and approve all papers being in order, item 9A, block party for 39 to 55 Dexter Street for October 29th.
You heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote, Counselor Turco.
Mr. President, I have a couple of motions. My first motion would be to install a stop sign, it's a co-motion with Counselor Walsh at the intersection of Gedney and Bartholomew, that motion was already filed, actually, so the motion would be to amend the city ordinance under Article 5 Stop Streets, Section 19-126, to add Bartholomew and Gedney as a stop location.
And advertise. You heard the motion from Counselor Turco, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote, Counselor Turco.
Mr. President, the next motion is regarding Raden Park, it's come to my attention that GPSes lead people to Raden Road and Crock Mall Road to get to the park, as we all know, the entrance is actually on Linfield Street, it's difficult to find because it's between two buildings, so the motion is to add a sign designating Raden Park entrance on Linfield Street at the entrance to Raden Park, I refer to Parks and Recreation.
Councilors, you heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote, Counselor Turco.
Mr. President, also regarding Raden Park, on Crock Mall Road, there is a walking trail to Raden with no parking signs butting it on Crock Mall that are blocked by trees, and the motion would be to have the trees around the no parking signs pruned on Crock Mall Road.
Councilors, you heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote, Counselor Turco.
Lastly, Mr. President, this one confuses me a bit, but a couple months ago, Peabody Little League --
League approached Parks and Recreation and asked them for permission to paint the snack bars at both James Street and MacArthur Parks, and the caveat was they asked Parks and Rec to supply the paint, but they would do the maintenance in the painting. That request was denied, and I'd like to make a motion to allow PBD Little League to paint these snack bars as it's needed, and to have Parks and Rec supply the paint to PBD Little League.
Counselors, you heard the motion, all in favor? Any opposed, it's a vote. Counselor Turco.
That would be all, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Turco. Counselor Gravel.
No motion.
Thank you, Counselor Gravel. Counselor Garabedian.
No motion, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Garabedian. Counselor Gould.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion, co-motion with Counselor Mazzulis, please, to have the sidewalks repaired at 34 to 36 Highland Street. So moved.
You heard the motion, all in favor? Any opposed, it's a vote. Counselor Gould.
And I'd like to make a motion with you, Mr. President, to have a handicap sign installed at 7 Carlton Street. I believe that's you. Is that not, Mr. President?
Yes, it is.
So moved.
That's an ordinance, so we need...
An ordinance, please. It's not an emergency preamble, we'll just do an ordinance on that. Thank you.
Counselors, you heard the motion, all in favor? Any opposed, it's a vote. Counselor Gould.
No further...
Counselor Mazzulis.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tom, I want to thank you for making that motion. I also, in case the person that asked us to make that motion is watching, I called that in anyways with Public Works, so, thank you.
Counselor Sinowitz.
I'd like to amend my motion. The motion I made to send that letter to the school committee, ask to, for the vote, school committee woman, Ms. Dunn, said that it really should go directly to Dr. Lepini at the school. So let's bypass the school committee, and we'll send it right to Dr. Lepini. Thank you. So moved.
So I guess we take up your earlier motion under reconsideration, and then we reject that, and then we provide the new motion technically, so we can do that very quickly. Reconsideration on Counselor Sinowitz's motion, all in favor? Any opposed, it's a vote. And then the new motion is to...
Move to send the letter directly to the vocational school and Dr. Lepini. So moved.
Counselors, you heard the new motion by Counselor Sinowitz with respect to the vocational school, all in favor? Any opposed, it's a vote. All set? Thank you. Moving on, item 7B, Counselor Gravel, 7B. Yeah, I believe this needs to go to Finance.
I move to, I'd like to make a motion to direct item 7B, the amendment to schedule compensation position for building inspector and director of Parks, Recreation, Forestry to the Subcommittee on Finance, and a meeting to be established.
Counselors, you heard the motion from Counselor Gravel to receive and refer to Finance, all in favor? Any opposed, it's a vote. Counselor Gravel, also on everybody's desk was a late communication that was loosely related to this. I think it needs to also go and be dealt with in parallel.
First of all, I move to receive the late communication from His Honor of the Mayor regarding the Division VII Building Department to the code, and changing the code to the City of PBD.
Counselors, you heard the motion by Counselor Gravel to accept the late communication from His Honor of the Mayor. Counselor Sinowitz, on the motion.
So through you, Counselor, have we been not following protocol from the state? Because I thought it was mandatory that the building inspectors department was separate under CMR 780, something like that. It's supposed to be separate from all departments, and we, have we never done that? Are we out of compliance, or, I don't understand what, just...
I think it would be proper to take that up in Subcommittee when we're, when we're addressing this.
Just to answer your question, I don't think it's ever been a separate department,
So, so right now, we have a motion to accept the late communication, all in favor? Any opposed, it's a vote. Counselor Gravel.
Yeah, I, given that this is a, an ordinance issue for the code, I would recommend we submit it to the legal Subcommittee for Review, since it's not a zoning issue. So moved.
It's not a zoning issue, but it relates to the other matter that you just referred to Finance, so do we really want to deal with these, as, these two related matters in separate Subcommittees? That's, I'm asking for your wisdom on this.
I'll tell you what we'll do. We'll refer it to Finance and invite our friend, Tom Walsh, who's on the both committees, to participate.
Counselor Walsh.
I'd be more than happy to do that. Whatever, whatever gets the job done. If we have to put them in separate committees, we can do that. We could, actually, what we could do is schedule legal affairs prior to Finance and address the piece that needs to be, if you want to do that. I have no problem with it all being in Finance. If you want to do it that way, that's fine. Whatever works.
Let's, yeah, we're just very challenged right now, calendar-wise, so I'm trying to do things as efficiently as we can.
I'll take it.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Gravel. So we have a, we have a motion from Counselor Gravel to refer this late communication to Finance. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Item 8C, Counselor Turco.
Mr. President, I thought we already received 8C. Well, we'll move to receive, we did receive this already.
I don't believe so. I don't believe we did 8C.
Okay, move to receive, oh, move to receive item 8C.
Counselors, you heard the motion, all in favor? Any opposed, it's a vote. Counselor Turco, item 8G.
Mr. President, move to receive and set up a public hearing for Gregor Chazarey, 139 Linfield Street, our special permit application.
Counselors, you heard the motion, all in favor? Any opposed, it's a vote. Item 8K, okay, so, bear with me for a moment. Just want to provide a little background on this. So the council dealt with this previously, and it went through industrial community development in June of this year, and then it went to the planning board, but they did not act on it within the required 65-day period. So that necessitated bringing this back to the council to essentially restart the clock. And so my suggestion here would be, since we've already comprehensively dealt with this in June, and it's just back here on a technicality, would be to make a motion to receive and refer it directly to the planning board. I think that would be the most efficient. And I would just note that this resubmital missed a modification that was made during the June 9th meeting. So if the motion, if the council's agreeable, if the motion could be to refer this to community development, to incorporate the changes made at the June 9th, 2016 Industrial and Community Development meeting, and then forward to the planning board for consideration. Counselor Gould, would you be amenable to making that motion?
Follow the recommendations of Mr. President.
Counselors, you heard the motion? On the, on the motion, Counselor Sinowitz.
Thank you, Mr. President. So once it comes, goes to the planning board, it comes back to us?
That's correct.
With this amendment, we have to have another public hearing if there's been a change to it?
Correct. The flaw here was that it, that it, the clock expired on the original cycle. So had the clock not expired, it would have come back for another, for a hearing at the full council. So that's what would happen here, is it would come back with a planning board recommendation, and then we would address that as, as the full council. So we have a motion, all in favor? Any opposed, it's a vote. Item 8L, Counselor Gould.
Motion to receive and approve.
And approve. Counselors, you heard the motion, all in favor? Any opposed, it's a vote. Counselors, this is, on this, this is the warrant for the election. Two things to point out. Number one, there is a slight modification that I'm going to ask the clerk to read between what you received in your package and what, and what you're going to be asked to sign. And the second is that please don't leave here this evening until you've had an opportunity to sign the warrant. Clerk, if you could please...
Well, the only modification is, and it was pointed out to me, that under Ward 1 Precinct 2, the name has changed from Woodbridge Assisted Living to Chelsea Jewish Foundation. That's the only change. It's just a change in name, not venue, so, just a minor change to the warrant as submitted.
I see a lot of heads nodding up and down, so I'm assuming nobody has an issue with that. It's kind of a form of a late communication, I guess, so we'll accept that modification, all in favor? Any opposed, it's a vote. And, we're going to pass that around now for signature. Item 9C, Counselor Walsh.
Motion to receive and approve, all papers being in order.
Counselors, you heard the motion, all in favor? Any opposed, it's a vote. I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We are adjourned.